I'd like to welcome all of you, appreciate you coming tonight. We have about an hour and a half or so.
We do, we do indeed.
Kind of like to kick it off with a pledge of allegiance.
Here's our pledge. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to just help facilitate today. Has introduced Ron, Senator Plaid.
Ron, Ron, what's your?
I'd like to just bring up a little something I found out today. We now have a little bit of a problem. Roots goes back to Kansas.
Yeah.
I'm from Arkansas, my mother was from Kansas. Welcome.
Thank you.
That's a hard one for me.
There you are.
As you all know, Ron's been in the Senate since 1996, that's about 20 years. And he was the first elected to Fisher to institute a town hall in every county in state of Oregon every year. So this is in 20.
That's awesome.
And also, as you probably most even know, he sits on several committees. Budget committee, finance committee. Rank minimum of payments?
Yes.
Energy and natural resources. And here's an interesting one, intelligence.
My older child calls it the soapstone intelligence.
So I'll hand it over to Ron this time.
Ken, thanks so much, really appreciate it. Got some newcomers, who's here for the first time in our town meeting? Got some newcomers. Well, I usually start off by talking for about an hour or so. Nice gentleman with the white hat, he felt I was serious. Not going to do anything like this. Ken said this was part of the pledge that I made to Oregon, we were choosing our first new United States senator, really in 30 years. And I said, if I had the honor to be chosen, I'd throw open the door as a government. And we just have opened everybody, every county, every year. And I think, I think this town meeting number 740?
739.
739, okay. So that means 739 times what we're going to do like for the next 90 minutes or so. I'm not going to read off any calip prompters or read in these things. Just, I just want you all to educate me on what's important to you. I'll try to respond to your questions, obviously. Lots going on back there, natural resources, senior citizens, transportation, Iran, you name it. There's lots and lots going on that people care about. And I just so appreciate everybody coming out on a Saturday evening. We just went from Burns, then we're going to go to K Falls and see if we can kind of do the whole swing here in the next 12 hours or so. But I just so appreciate everybody coming and, Ken, let's just go right to it. And I think you got to modulate groups, we ought to have plenty of time for everybody to say whatever's important.
Yeah. What we'll do, each of you took a ticket if you have a discussion point, and I'll call off the last three numbers. And the first go is 041.
I would like to know what you think of the Iran deal.
I left Washington for Oregon on Thursday. And I had spent my day dealing with the Affordable Care Act, with transportation, with taxes, with forestry. And I said, you know, I'm going to get a fair number of questions about this. And I'll tell you, I'm going to have to take some time to really scrub this. Both the public agreement and then, as a member of the Intelligence Committee, I'll have access to classified, you know, materials. For me, it has always been unacceptable to go with the proposition that Iran is going to have a nuclear weapon. If you look at their history, if you look at their record cheating, that's always been my bottom line. Now, I've always tried to support diplomacy to the greatest extent possible. I was one of 23, for example, in the United States Senate who voted against going to war in Iraq. And I sure wish my vote had prevailed on that one, both in terms of blood and treasure. I think the losses to our country were extraordinary and as you know, we're still facing pretty much the same kind of challenges there now. So I look for diplomatic solutions. And I will tell you, some of the issues that I'm concerned about, you know, at this point are sort of as follows. First, when this all began, the focus was on dismantlement. Dismantling the facilities that would allow them to have a bomb. It seems this has kind of moved now towards sort of accepting it and managing it and the like. So I'm going to be working my way through that. At the beginning, and I've seen clips of this, we were really under the assumption that there would be anywhere, anytime inspections. Now we're hearing talk about like 24 days or something noticed the foreign inspection. And third, I have some questions, and I'm going to be talking to my engineering friends and business friends, about this question with respect to centrifuges. Because that's really crucial to Iran's building of a, you know, nuclear weapon. And the challenge, of course, is that the Iranians don't think in terms of months and years. They think in terms of decades and building that caliphate. So I take the time to really do this right. Don't expect me to issue any proclamations on this in the next 15 minutes. I think the states here are enormous.
What about the Adnan, the United States will protect their side?
The United States will protect their side. Well, that, of course, has been in the press reports. And I'm going to have to follow up on both public documents.
They didn't let you read it?
Pardon me?
They didn't let you?
Oh, yes, no, the, yes. As I said, you know, it just came out this week and on Thursday. Literally, I couldn't ask all the questions I wanted of Chief Tidwell of Forest Service because I had to run to the airport to get the plane to come home and have these meetings. So I don't have any problems with access to the documents. They've been straightforward, the public document, members of the Intelligence Committee are going to give access to the classified materials and other members will as well. So that's not been a question. But this is, this is something, you know, where the fine print real organizations.
Did you get to participate in the finalization of that, or has that been chopped out of the Senate?
No. The Senate passed the Congressional Review Act, which.
That was a court recalcitrant bill?
Yes, but it was a court recalcitrant bill, and I think it was almost unanimous in the Senate. It was a very good idea. Two very good senators, one Republican, one Democrat, you know, pursued it. That's kind of the way I like it, you know, when you have good bipartisan twosome, you know, leading it. And that period will start when essentially all the documents have arrived. Now, there was a new wrinkle in this on Friday, which concerned me, which was the administration was talking about going to the UN to get approval. And I said.
That's a very trustful organization.
Well, you can have your own view. I think the UN does some very good things or other things.
They're more different than that, yeah.
I think they do some very good things, I think they do some other things, not so good. But the point is, going to the UN before the Congress weighs in is really, in my view, flouting the Review Act. You know, the whole point of it.
So you think these people are just dumb or they're very calculating?
Which people?
Executive branch.
The Obama administration?
Yeah.
I think they're obviously, I'm not going to challenge somebody's personal, you know, motives. I think they obviously feel this is a good thing. I hope I've told you what my concerns are, A. B, how I'm going to proceed with it. And three, I didn't much care for this notion that suddenly this was going to go to the UN and somehow there would be a UN stamp of approval before the Congress had.
See, I am very alarmed, my grandchildren may end up wanting to fight a thing in this war.
Pardon me?
That my grandchildren might wind up having to fight in this war, which is a concern of ours.
I, I think we are a long ways from really sinking through the ramifications here. I'll give you another one. The countries, yeah, the countries, the countries in the neighborhood are very concerned about how, if this goes forward, that they better get a nuclear weapon. So there are real questions with respect to nuclear proliferation. Right now, for me, more questions than answers. So I'm going to take the time to do the night.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's a question that concerns a lot of us. Number 048?
048, Senator, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
I've got a few questions here, and I thought I would get it in in a minute, but it seems pretty cowed to.
Take your time.
The first question is regarding the Senate Bill 1709 introduced July 7th, the 21st Century Glass Steagall Act. Just want to know your position on that, if you were willing to sign on one board, it was Senator Cantwell, Angus King, Elizabeth Warren, John McCain, I believe. Second question has to do with the $2.6 billion shortfall to the VA. Do you have any update on that? And what's the status of the TPP and what are the changes that you have made or want to make?
Three very good questions. TPP, VA, and the first one was Glass Steagall, right?
Yes.
Folks, this will be enough to keep us entertained for about two hours. So settle in, and I'll do my best to give kind of a short discussion about it. With respect to the TPP, that's not been sinished yet. So what the gentleman's asking about is the international trade issue. And we have sinished what's called the TPA Bill, Trade Promotion Authority Bill, which sets the rules for the actual agreements, which the first will be TPP, then there's one with Europe, and there's going to be a variety of others. You may know that I am essentially the author of the TPA Bill with Senator Hatch and with Congressman Ryan.
Headed up.
Pardon me?
You're headed up.
Yeah, yeah. The three of us are kind of the ringleaders on it. So the next question is, so what's Ron spending his time on this thing for? And, you know, is it good and what does it mean for Oregon? One out of five jobs in our state depends on international trade. And the trade jobs often pay better than do the non-trade jobs because they're export related. And often they have a lot of value added to it, which makes it more attractive to get people with good wages and good skills involved. And of course, in central and eastern Oregon, we have a lot of ag products that we want to, you know, export. And a lot of those ag products have 20, 30, 40 percent, you know, tariffs. So you try to, for example, get beef into Japan, good luck with that. You're facing enormous kind of tariffs. Our markets are open, their markets are pretty much closed without these, you know, huge tariffs. We get more out of it than do the, you know, the other guys. So I sort of start from that kind of position. And by the way, Oregon has a net surplus, a net surplus. In other words, we get more out of exports than we do out of imports. The trade is a big deal for our state. Now, those who have been critical of trade have, in my view, had some very good arguments. And I'll tick through, you know, a few of them. You may have seen the argument that all this has been done in secret. Too much secrecy and all that.
If I may add aside, Barbara Boxer was asked for her notes when she was leaving Senate chambers. I mean, are senators allowed to check their notes or take their notes home in regards to deliberations regarding the TPP? She made a pretty big stake about it, and rightly so, I believe.
Here's the way it works. The negotiations for a trade agreement are almost identical to the way a labor union negotiates a contract. In other words, they sit down, the union sits down with the company and they do everything, and it's confidential because neither side wants to give them an advantage. After they have negotiated their agreement, then it comes back to the membership, and the membership goes up or goes down. So the initial negotiation process works very much the way you have a labor negotiation anywhere in the United States. Now, I've said that's not good enough, that we've got to do better. So as a matter of law, I forced in these discussions with Mr. Hatch and Mr. Ryan, two major changes with respect to transparency, and I want to describe both of them to you. For the first time by law, before the President of the United States even signs a trade agreement like TPP, it has to be public for 60 days. So before anybody does anything, you get 60 days at your iPad or laptop or wherever to read it, and the whole thing is public. After that, there's essentially two more months of procedures before anybody votes in the Senate and anybody votes in the House on the actual TPP. So what that means is, you'll have it in your hands for about four months, the whole document, before anybody actually votes. And that was something I felt strong about. Then, a lot of folks who were skeptical said, we don't know what's going on in the negotiations, which I think is really what your point with Barbara Boxer is all about. And I said, Mr. Hatch, Mr. Ryan, I insist on changing that. And I got that too. So by law, and it's going to start actually in a week, which I'll explain. When there is a negotiation, there's probably only one more, one or two more on TPP. After the negotiation, the negotiators have to put out a public summary of what they just talked about. And I just went through it again. I said, guys, I insisted on that, it's in the law, I'm going to insist that it actually be followed. Pardon me?
That actually occurs.
Yeah, yeah. And there's really probably only about one more round of TPP. So with that second requirement about the negotiations, if they do it the next week or so, they got to get a document public out very quickly after that in order to comply with the law. So I really would tell you, I think this is the most open and transparent trade agreement in history, largely because I insisted on it. I just said, you know, I have all these town meetings at home because I believe in transparent government. You're not going to do it the same way where everybody's in the dark, that's number one. Number two, VA, I agree with John McCain said yesterday in response to your question, that the VA bureaucracy is just completely broken. He thought with his bill that we had put the budget issue behind us, you know, the report that you're asking about with the rear. Clearly they haven't. So if we're going to be going back in, he's the chairman of the committee, the Armed Services Committee. Glass Steagall, I'm looking at the bill that you asked about. I believe it is the Cantwell-King bill. What this deals with is the question of what to do with these big financial institutions. I voted against the Wall Street bailout when a Republican president asked for it and when a Democratic president asked for it. Because I thought it basically gave him a free ride. And I voted consistently to break those big banks up. So I'm looking carefully at Glass Steagall in terms of the ramifications for the banking system. I'll have more to say about it down the road. But anybody who wants to know about my record on Wall Street, I think there were only 13 of us who voted against the bank bailout twice. Because some did it when there was a Democratic president, some did it when there was a Republican president. I said, nothing doing, I'm voting against it when there's a Democratic president and I'm when there's a Republican.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Member 54. Bill?
Yeah. I'm so glad they told you two you didn't have to work anymore. Come on in and join us. Go.
Well, you know, given the fact that it's Congress's responsibility to negotiate trade deals, I'm wondering why you signed the fast track to enable President Obama to do the negotiating?
Respectfully, sir, I don't see how the Congress could negotiate a trade deal because there are 535 members of Congress. In other words, there are 435 House members, there's 100 senators, and so you got the, you know, 11 countries.
I think maybe you guys could make a committee or something. Here's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the sovereignty of the United States courts over business that happens here. I'm concerned about the country of origin labeling leaving our products, so we don't know where they came from. I'm concerned about the fact that a foreign company could sue the United States government for having environmental regulations that stops them from making profits on things that we don't allow. And that's all in there. But mainly, I'm really concerned about the idea that if you've got an issue with it, it goes before a tribunal in Geneva rather than a United States court.
Let's take the tribunal question first, because there is more than one tribunal. And here's what this involves, folks. It's called the Investor State Provision.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we're on the same wavelength, okay. So the reason we have this provision, and we have had it in our trade law for decades, is because it was the judgment quite a long time ago, before I was around, that some of these foreign courts, if you had disputes with American companies in these foreign courts, wouldn't be too friendly or too objective to Americans. So we set up these tribunals, and there are a variety of them, so it's not just the one in Geneva. But here's the important fact. The United States has never lost a case and never paid a dime in penalties through all the time we've had Investor State. So let me repeat that, because everybody's heard all these horrible stories. Shoot, if I heard all these horrible stories, I'd be pretty upset too. We have never lost a case, we have never paid a dime in penalties under Investor State. I thought that even wasn't strong enough. So to protect American sovereignty, we made sure that you couldn't do anything to overturn an American consumer health or environmental law. I mean, that was a primary focus of mine in the discussions. So I'm glad that you asked about this, and I think it's important.
Does that affect country of origin labeling?
Oh, country of origin labeling is not a part of the TPA, TPP debate. It is part of another trade proceeding. I feel very strongly that Americans ought to know where their food's coming from, period. We can debate about the details, but I think people have a right to know where their food is coming from. So now everybody's kind of exercised about a WTO, World Trade Organization decision, on this subject. And I've made it clear that that cannot be used to throw out an American food labeling law. So our executive branch officials are pursuing it. But I actually voted for Sanders Amendment for the GMO labeling and the like when it came up.
The other thing I'm very concerned about with TPP is the extension of patents on pharmaceuticals for an extra 20 years. That's going to keep generics out that much longer. And, you know, I mean, it just seems that what's really going on is the interests of the major corporations are being served, and the American people and the rest of the world are just going to have to handle it.
It's a very good question and an extremely important one. And I've spent a lot of time with our chief negotiator, Mike Froman, who is the USTR, the United States Trade Representative, on this point. And here's what I think they're looking at. And if they do this, I think there's an opportunity to get a bipartisan agreement that I would support. First, with respect to the poorer nations, Vietnam would come to mind. There's got to be tough language ensuring access to generics, okay? That's them. With respect to the more affluent countries, Japan would be an example there, the patent issue's got to be dealt with. And I said this to Mr. Froman, so that it is clear that this will not result in higher drug prices for Americans. Our prices are already plenty high. And in fact, I've been trying to change the Medicare law so the Medicare can negotiate to hold down the price, which is one. And I'm doing.
I support that.
Pardon me?
I support that.
And I'm leading an investigation into Sovaldi. You may have heard about that, that's a hepatitis C drug, which, and it's a particularly important investigation because this is the first of the specialty drugs, not the Part D drugs that are covered by Medicare, but the specialty drugs. So I feel very strongly about affordable medicine, goes back to the days when I was director of the Great Hancers, the senior citizens group, those points that you're making here is a very important question. And if they get it right, we got an agreement, if they don't get it right, we have problems.
Very good questions, but so that everybody has the opportunity, can we hold one at a time? And then at the end, if we have someone to come in. 49.
Haven't there been a bad question asked yet?
49? I'll hold that number there. How about 42?
And as we get all, can we also thank the officer there in the back for helping us out? Thank you, Rob.
42, my question is about the VA also.
Yeah.
Now, they have $2.5 billion conservative choice call. They want to close.
That way everybody hears the word, say.
Hostels.
Yeah.
The Choice Card is an utter piece of ridiculous, it's a farce. I don't know how anybody thought up on that, and there was no follow-up on it. The procedures on that, the protocols on that are just totally ridiculous. Didn't the Congress vote in a $16 billion increase in the VA? And every place you go, every hospital you go to is under construction, new art, new furniture, new god knows what. You know, they may have new letterheads.
It's actually even worse than you described because in Colorado, in the Big Denver Hospital, they are way, way over on the cost overruns.
Well, I'm getting tired of going to VA because there's a running investigation. That's why I left White City. I mean, I had a doctor that, I swear to God, one of his tests could not descend. And, you know, it's just totally wasted time. I mean, I went to Vietnam as a dumb 18-year-old kid, thinking the government would take care of me. I certainly woke up. So what are the, is there anything in the process?
Yes.
Of the kind of building for this, or we just have to build with this new one or kind of building?
I'm not sure I can add too much more than what came out on Thursday, where Senator McCain, the chairman of the Armed Services Committee, said that the bureaucracy in his view, and he was the author of the bill.
But he hasn't seen it since God knows when.
And that he was determined now to unpack this and see what has caused this overage so soon after the bill was passed. Now, I have a couple of thoughts about what I think we ought to be doing. In addition, of course, getting the Choice Card right is really key. But what's worked for us most in rural Oregon, and I've told this to Chairman McCain, is the satellite clinics. We have had a lot of luck with these satellite clinics, particularly given the kind of challenges with the vets coming back.
So are the satellite clinics contract or are they actual VA facilities?
Does he get VA facilities?
Because I went to contract VA facilities more so.
Um, Kathleen, the one in La Grande is a VA facility, right? Yeah. No, I understand, but what we have focused on, because I think you're making good points, you want to make sure taxpayer dollars aren't being ripped off, and then we really want to know how it relates to us here. Because it's fine to talk about this in the abstract and, oh, that's Chicago or Miami. We believe that dollar for dollar, we have gotten the best value, both in terms of the quality of care and patient satisfaction with these satellite clinics. And the one in La Grande is a pretty good example. And Kathleen, the last time I think we saw a survey or quality review, both the quality numbers and the patient satisfaction numbers were very high.
Oh, yeah, people are very happy.
So are you going to try to get one of those in each?
Yes, well, in every town, obviously you're not going to get one in every town.
How about county?
But apropos of your question, you know, sir, that's the point of what needs to be done now. Clearly, the law, where we put all, first thing, you all know that it was like a year ago when we had this horrible scandal and falsifying. ago when we had this horrible scandal and falsifying records and getting bonuses and all the rest. So Chairman McCain leaves this investigation, you order billions of dollars, additional money, and then for everybody to wake up in the middle of this week and find out, oh, here's what the auditors were, you know, were saying, is like a kick.
So you go through a bill and you get it done, and then you just wander off into wherever you want to go. The culture of the VA is geared toward one thing, a management culture, is to stop anything that you put into place on a majority. Well, it may sound a little ridiculous, but I can remember in the seventies, when I got back to Vietnam, you couldn't even go to the VA. Your life wasn't worth it, at least squat. You'd probably sit back in some room somewhere and rot. So, you know, I am angry about that.
But respectfully, sir, the last thing I do when I hear about either a law being passed or outrage is just kind of sit around and wait. So I don't serve on the Veterans Affairs Committee. The second I got this new report, we reached out to them, we said, A, people are going to be furious, I'm going to have these three town meetings, I'm going to tell you, I'm furious about it. And B, instead of just getting mad, I said, here's what I think we need to do instead. And so we've made it very clear that we think what has worked best in our state are these satellite, you know, clinics, people aren't having to go to Walla Walla and Portland and icy roads in the winter and lots. So that's what I've done, basically in addition to those things I did on Thursday before I got on the plane, so I could be here.
Well, don't worry about it if they actually get them.
Got it.
Remember, when we came back down here, basically, we were going to Clamton Falls. The first thing they said was, we don't have doctors, we don't take patients in.
I hear you.
And Reno, Argus, you would, because they're not going to figure for dying to go down there.
And the county's just been trying for about five, six years to get the VA to use our facility, a good hospital right here.
Yeah, why not?
Best look, we have Charlie over here at the VA hosting your avenues.
Go on to another question if you may. Fifty-six?
Well, I'll just pass there.
You're like the Senate, you yield.
You know, I've heard that these soldiers are being drugged very heavily by the doctors in the VA, you know, more than they should be.
Bill?
A lot of opiates.
Bill? Let's move along. Forty-nine again. Forty-four?
Ticket scandal.
We may be getting right back to some of these hotter discussions. Fifty-seven? You got it, Orlando?
Oh, don't think I can finish that. Kind of support what some of these vets have been saying, you know, when I hear complaints from people, they're saying that they have some problems with the way they're being treated. And these are guys that are, you know, Vietnam vets.
Let me ask you a question about that. What we have found, because we have a lot of veterans who work in my office solely to be advocates for veterans, and it's generally their judgment that the care for veterans can be pretty good in Oregon if they can get it. The problem has been big weights, lost records, this, that, or something else. Is that in line with what you're hearing?
Well, what I'm hearing is, one of the things, like I said, I'm a native voter, I wasn't a vet. So, and basically, one complaint that I've heard is that they get assigned a doctor, and this individual, two individuals have been assigned doctors, dentists, oncologists, or whatever, and they said that they weren't having the service that they were getting.
If you can get me their name or give me an email, I'll follow it up.
What they were saying was they were trying to get a change, saying, hey, you know, we're not getting the service we need with this particular doctor or this particular company. And that the veteran service or somebody, I don't know who it is, told them, can't help you. You have this doctor, and you're going to stay with that doctor until you need the hours again.
Well, I think the quality here is good, depends on who you can get first of all.
Sir, if you can get me the email and the phone, we will follow up, I will have one of the veterans in my office follow up. Okay?
One thing, real quick, I was looking at National Geographic, and they were covering Vietnam, the vets coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan. And I don't know what's going on, you know, that's really a bad business there. You know, we're dealing with, you know, what, La Grande, we're dealing with another type of disability that we'd never been before, severe brain injuries. And, you know, I mean, these people need to be taken care of. And thank you.
And that is a particularly important point, and one that I think the country and the Congress is just getting its arms around. As I said, I was one of 23 who voted against the war in Iraq. And I went to Iraq, and I saw those, what are essentially state-of-the-art hospitals a few hundred yards from the battlefield. A few hundred yards from the battlefield. And you can see exactly what you're talking about. Those soldiers might have stepped on IED, something of that nature, and they would not possibly have survived even four or five years ago. But today, if they can survive in that state-of-the-art facility close to the battlefield, and they get them on a life flight to Germany a couple of days later, and the person can survive in Germany and is on their way to the United States, we've got to figure out a way to make sure that they get quality healthcare for the rest of their lives. So this is not going to be inexpensive, and it's one of the reasons that it's so important that the Veterans Committee and Chairman McCain get this right now. Because the nature of those injuries, and as I say, if I had my way, we would not have gone. Because I think we should have concentrated on Afghanistan, which we're been Laden with. We took our eye off the ball and went to Iraq. We still have the conflicts there today that we had then. But now we've got to make sure those veterans get good care.
Forty-five?
I don't have a question, because thank you for telling me about those ideas.
You can change your mind down the road if I don't get you.
By the way, my friend Earl was a door gunner in Marines in Vietnam and was in a few crashes. And he had a really tough time. He had to go to White City a lot, but he needed glasses. They were willing to buy him glasses, but he had to go to Portland to get them. I mean, it was really ridiculous. And when this guy, he was on so many different drugs, they kept prescribing more drugs and not taking him off of the other ones. And, I mean, this man was daily taking enough opiates to kill a horse, and, I mean, he was so acclimated to it, it was a constant thing.
It raises another important health policy issue that I've been, I've been spending time on. It looks like in so many of the government health programs, the opiate is the first choice rather than the last choice. And that is not the way it's supposed to be. You'll hear me have something to say on this here before long, because I'm looking at how we change it.
Fifty-three?
Yes, sir.
That's Chairman White. We have a bit on the Bayou Dudes grazing association.
I'm sorry, you have a-
Bayou Dudes grazing association, it's one of the largest grazing associations in Oregon, 25,880. There's 10 local ranchers that run their cows on the Bayou Dudes. They're mostly located in Warner Valley, Plush, and Adele. Our biggest concern right now is the number of wild horses that are out there and not being removed. Do you, have you heard much about it, or are you working on that issue?
Both the wild horses and the sage grouse are obviously getting a lot, you know, of attention. And I think the, you know, the question is going to be, I know MC Ranch and some of the environmental and political leaders were hopeful that they could work something out. The ranch has been interested in a variety of approaches, conservation areas and the like, but there isn't any question that the number of horses is something like 10 times the level thought to be, you know, sustainable. So the situation is going to get, you know, worse. And also, we've got the situation with the BLM losing grazing lands, at least in the Midwest, and so we've got a host of issues coming at us. So give me your take, because you're living this and breathing it every day, it's not some, you know, government statistic. What do you think, given the fact that there were some discussions trying to work this out here not too long ago? What's the next move that you think would be in the interest of residents?
I think the next move would be to gather the horses down to the AML where they're supposed to be, which is between 100 and 215 horses. And there's an opportunity to maybe perhaps put them in Simples facility that is coming online this fall, I think. That would be, it's kind of an urgent situation, and we participated in those meetings with the environmental groups. We had seven or eight in the last year. And it was consensus of that group, it was urgent to remove these horses as quick as possible and to create, make sure there's some funding.
So you think, you think at this point there would be consensus now for what you described?
Yes, absolutely.
Wayne, why don't you look into that? Mr. Kenny is here.
Mr. Kenny was at one of the meetings.
Mr. Kenny's my dad.
Okay.
We were at many of the same meetings.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, because, I mean, in both the case of the wild horses, you know, and sage grouse, I mean, this is like a lot of the natural resources issues. Everybody's got just enough cloud to block the other if they go to the legal demolition derby, right? Situation where they just go out and sue each other, and it's a lawyer's employment program. So if you think your approach could get consensus on both sides on the wild horses issue, we'll follow it up. That sounds pretty good.
Number 50?
I'd like to follow up on John's discussion. I think the wise use of natural resources in Lake County and eastern Oregon are just paramount to our economy. We have to have access to timber grazing. There's 1% of the people feeding the world, and we don't need to have constant roadblocks from minute interests that would take these away from our economy.
I have always been a supporter of the multiple use, you know, concept. That was what I've always thought was the bedrock kind of approach. And we've tried to work on a variety of things that, you know, it started to show some promise in the area, biomass, geothermal, and some of the things that you all have been looking at. I think apropos of the next step, and Ken, maybe you can brief me on it, I think Red Rock is getting fairly close to getting off to the races on biofuels. Is that correct?
They've gotten their land use permit, they've gotten their enterprise zone, I believe, pretty much wrapped up. Right now, it's, it deals with urban growth, ground rechange, and there's some strict state laws on that, and they got boot block, now they're looking at another avenue.
That's another biomass effort, isn't it?
Once they get that, then that would be about 25 folks at the facility, 15, 75 pregnant, whatever is in. So it's promising.
I think one of the problems that we have is coming from some of the bureau that prevents the full use of the AUMs that we have available. Rightly or wrongly, I think that should be investigated.
You know, the question of how you get balance in natural, you know, resources policy. And I wrote the timber payments law, Jane knows a little bit about that, it's brought Oregon about $3 billion. It's still important, you know, in eastern Oregon, I got that added, you know, so that Ken and the community would have access to those kinds of, kinds of resources. Reflects the fact that these agencies know that both sides have the ability to go out and sue on the drop of a hat. And that just brings everything to a halt. And so what I've tried to do in most of these natural resources issues, you know, I stepped in when President Bush had his Healthy Forests Restoration Act, and he couldn't get it through the Senate, and I stepped in and got, you know, a big group of Democrats and Republicans to put it together. One of the things we said on the litigation issue is everybody's got a right to bring up their concern. This is America, because you don't have a constitutional right to a five-year delay. And so I think there is a kind of balance here that you've got to focus on, and both now on both my east side, west side bills, I've tried to take that same approach.
Forty-six?
Just about.
This is my first meeting I've ever been to, and my question is-
Great.
That July 1st, the state of Oregon legalized marijuana.
Yeah.
And like Colorado being one of the first to legalize it, and I've seen where they paid millions and millions and millions of dollars for the state. Is that going to happen in the state of Oregon, or do you have any idea what's going to happen with that?
You know, first of all, this is something we voted on as Oregonian. So it is not a direct federal issue, although there are pieces that are federal, I'm going to talk you through each one of those. You know, my hope is, as the state legislature began the effort, is that we will see that this is something that will help us get through some of these, you know, financial, you know, challenges that we have. And at the federal level, I can tell you, I see my job when Oregonians vote for something to try to make sure that the will of Oregon voters is carried out. I'm involved in two efforts right now. One is, we've legalized this as of July 1st, but when people are selling this in accord, you know, with the rules, they can't take it to a bank. And I think that's bad just from a law enforcement standpoint. I mean, what are people going to ride around with big wheelbarrows full of, you know, cash and have people, you know, beat them up and steal their money and that kind of thing? So I have said that in accord with the banking, you know, rules, that they could make those deposits. Second, because, as Ken noted, I'm the senior Democrat on the tax writing committee, I have said that because Oregonians have deemed this legal conduct, that what we ought to do on taxes is act like it's legal conduct. So if a non-marijuana business can hire a veteran for their job and get the federal tax credit for hiring a vet, seems to me one of these marijuana outlets, if they want to hire, you know, a veteran, they get the tax credit too, because we have deemed this legal conduct. And everybody always says, well, how do you feel, how this? Oregonians have passed judgment now on something that historically has been reserved for Oregon. Now, there's one last issue that, you know, concerns me about this too, and that is, you know, the question of the scheduling. Because part of the scheduling doesn't make any sense either, that it is marijuana actually more dangerous than cocaine for the scheduling? And I have asked the federal government for the health records to prove that, to make the case, because I think Oregonians would like that information, you know, as you know, down in Salem, they asked some questions about scheduling recently, too.
The reason I was asking was because I'm part of this new program that they put in to Lake County, and it's drug treatment program. And I'm one of the first ones in the program, and that's why I was asking was because before it all became legal, I got myself in trouble, but now I'm going through this new thing to Lake County, so we'll see what happens.
I very much admire the fact that you would come to a community meeting and participate in this. It's really, it's really impressive that you would do it, and obviously, you are showing a commitment both to yourself and to your community by doing this. So thank you very much.
Well, I'm not doing it yet. I need to say the truth in my book for you, so I'm taking it back to the German.
What am I signing? What's your first name? I'm going to start with science. Read the small print. I'm going to sign it on Saturday. How do you spell your name?
J O F R Y C H.
E, E.
R E.
Yeah.
S A.
S A.
Thank you so very much. Yeah, it's been, it's really been a big, big thing.
I'm not writing the Gipper draft. Can you read my writing, Teresa? Oh, so you're in the program too? What's your name?
My name's Steve.
Steve.
So I don't know if you're part of that program, that is, how it depends for this community to do this.
Yes, yeah, I know about the federal drug prevention program. I think that's when you already.
So just thank you if you made that work, and it does work.
It does work. This vote has become more of an addiction than my addiction. Judges make sure of that. It's a great program. Sorry to take your time.
Be kidding. I think everybody admires the fact that you're working so hard to stay clean.
Yeah. And we also volunteer at Senior Center.
Oh, you really got my heart.
Hi. Both of us do.
Steve, can you read my writing? Okay. Let's get both of them around to the front.
Don't quit the pen while you're.
Oh, have yours?
Fifty-five.
Senator Wyden, good to see you. And I have taken the opportunity many times to interview you at the radio station.
Yes, of course.
It's a pleasure to have you back here, but there's something.
Do you still have your place at the small radio station?
Yes, sir, we do.
Very cool. If you haven't been over there, go on by, it's great.
Wanted to ask something. I serve on the town council here in Lakeview, and something that we don't have too often is the opportunity for economic recovery, such as much of the nation has already experienced, we're a little lagging in that regard. We have groups that have come to our community, and I'm sure that they're a little scared now after the federal government gave, pretty much the RD administration gave the approval to the sovereign countries of our nation's indigenous people, the Indians, the opportunity to grow marijuana for medical or whatever purposes they so desired. But we've had our neighbors to the south, the Pitt River Tribe, as well as the Alturas Rancheria that just went through a raid. They thought they were doing things right. We've got a group here in Lakeview, or in Lake County, that is wanting to put in greenhouses. Is the federal government going to continue to make promises that they want to get involved in these types of activities to scare off those people that are willing to put investments into our community and other communities?
Let me make sure I understand what's going on. So Oregonians voted for the use of medical marijuana.
That's right.
That is state law. And so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that in carrying out this state law, this has frightened off investors?
Well, what I'm speaking of, it actually was across the state line, our neighbors to the south in California, the Pitt River Tribe, and they just went through a recent raid of their greenhouses.
And who did that? State or federal?
Federal. Federal DEA and DIA, and involvement of local.
It was not in Oregon?
It was not in Oregon. So it has nothing really to do with Oregon, but it has to do with federal statutes, the federal government looking to come in and entities that are doing things right, such as what we're looking at, at having come into our community, perhaps other places in Oregon. They think that they can start greenhouses, but yet the federal government is going to move in on them. Their investments are not very sound.
Let me try to think this through, but my, my general view is pretty much what I told Teresa here a moment ago, is when Oregonians vote for something, and we voted in both of these instances with marijuana, more generally marijuana, with respect to medical use, I think the federal government should, on issues reserved to the states, be respectful of that. So again, this is California, not Oregon, but let's, and Jacob, if you could follow it up, because he's a very community-minded member and looking for opportunities for his city, and we'll follow it up.
According to the article in the newspaper, the reason that the federal cops were working with the leaders of the tribe who were unaware of the operation, and the stuff was intended for sale out of the state. And those were in violation of the tribe's rights apparently. So just for what it's worth, I don't think it was, you know, the whole tribe was behind it.
Forty-three.
I just wonder if there's any bipartisan movement or any movement toward campaign finance reform.
Oh, please, thank you. What an important question. And, you know, anybody who knows me knows I'm really a glass half-full guy. You know, I get up in the morning and say, this is America, we're always going to make things better. But I am very, very troubled about the state, you know, of campaign finance at this point. The Supreme Court, this court is basically moving to say that the rich guy's checkbook and the poor guy's soapbox are basically the same thing. That this is all protected First Amendment speech, and you can't do anything about it unless you pass a constitutional amendment. And this is what the Citizens United case is all about, which is very troubling. And if you look at the court's holdings in areas other than Citizens United, as if that wasn't bad enough, I think this court is moving to take all the limits off altogether. In other words, you could have somebody give $100 million, and then the question was, would it even be disclosed? So we're taking the hinges off, you know, democracy. And that's one of the reasons why I've been doing so many of the town hall meetings, because I know people are concerned that their voice is just going to get drowned out. And I've said that we're going to make sure on our watch that that's not the way it works. Now, in the last Congress, I was at least able to get Republican support, only one Republican on one bill, for disclosure, so that people would actually even know who was giving these big sums of money. This Congress, we don't even have that yet. So I just hope there'll be a real citizens uprising, you know, about this. But I think, I think that, you know, at some point, you allow all this money just, you know, swashing around, you're going to have a big scandal. And that's not what we do, is wait around for, for that. I think that, and there are a variety of things I want done. If I had my first choice, we'd limit campaigns to a couple of months before an election.
Yay.
You know, heaven forbid. You'd actually do your job now. You have an election first Tuesday in November, everybody sleeps in on Wednesday, and the campaign starts all over again on Thursday. It just, you know, is nonstop. That'd be my first choice. That, disclosure, it's their limits, and that's something.
If I may comment on an anecdote that is in the movement, I, there's www.wolfpac-y, or wolf slash pack, you know, dot com.
I've heard it. How does it work? I've heard they're doing something.
It is a, its number one objective is to overturn Citizens United. And they say there's two ways, through a constitutional amendment.
I have voted for that.
There are two ways to do that, through Congress, and for the bipartisanship that does exist, it's not going to be enough to amend the Constitution. So they're taking it to the state legislatures, allowing the state legislatures, which we need two-thirds of the state legislatures in the nation to ratify and make an amendment to the Constitution. So it's got some momentum, it's had some roadblocks, but that is an accident right now to overturn Citizens United.
I voted a number of times for the constitutional amendment route, so I think that, and as I say, this is one of the reasons, ma'am, that we're doing so many of these town hall meetings, is I just want people to know in our state, on my watch, government's not the same. That's why we're here, talking about issues that are important to you. And you asked about the TPP. I insisted on those transparency provisions. So whether people like it or not, they're going to actually know what's in there before anybody starts voting. And that was one of the reasons the talks went on so long. Everybody said, why is Ron Wyden holding it up? I'm holding it up because I was insisting on transparency.
Fifty-two.
Don't get nervous, yes. It seems like on the marijuana issue, it seems kind of muddled to me. My question is, why does it not be treated like tobacco and alcohol? I mean, why is it not on the shelves being sold to adults? If that, I mean, it's out there, it's going to be done. I don't know why it's not handled that way so the government gets their money under the rule. Yeah, and everybody gets a piece of that pie. It just seems like it's, like it's a very unsure operation at this time.
If I took, just took out my crystal ball for a moment, my take would be that as more states vote as Oregon did here recently, that will build momentum, that will build momentum for a federal approach, just for the reasons that you're talking about. And there will be lots of issues to, you know, go through. I'm the fellow who asked a tobacco executive whether nicotine was addictive, and they were under oath, and they obviously lied, and we couldn't even get them for perjury on that. So.
Why is that?
It's very hard to show intent. And when I, if you can see it, you can see it on YouTube, I go down the row and I ask each one of them, the young member of Congress, full head of hair and rugged good looks. And they're all under oath. They said nicotine addictive, no. And I said, of course they lied. 97% of the American people said they lied, but you have to prove intent. So the point is, I think what you're talking about is where this is headed. And there'll be a few more states, you know, we got Oregon, Colorado, and a couple of states and all the rest. But, you know, you get, you get this in the vicinity of 10 states, they enact it, I think that's where it's going.
Yeah, I mean, I don't use it, but I just feel like it is not being, it's not being handled.
Right.
Properly, right now.
Last I saw, there's about six other states that are considering.
Really?
Even my neighbor, Tennessee, Missouri.
I feel like it's not like a moonshine thing, right, still?
Fifty-one.
I have the number zero-zero.
Wow. Jim Wallace. Oh. Jim couldn't be here if we had other topics. Just has to do with.
It has to do with the investment tax credit.
Yes.
That's going to be in front of you guys next Tuesday.
Yes.
And on solar, you know, the amount of effort we have put in here, Jim Wallace himself.
Right.
Some of the investors concerned about the solar aspect not being extended, I think it comes sometime in 2016.
Yeah.
They would like to have, they've got some things in the pipeline that they cannot get through before they dead-end. They would like to have, have a consideration.
You, you tell Jim that I have put a lot of hours in this, and I want him to be able to have those investments in solar in 2016. There is one catch. We have to make sure that in doing this, we don't help the Chinese evade the penalties that they have faced for dumping solar panels on us. As you know, we have a major company in the Portland area, Solar World, which has brought dumping actions against the Chinese. The Chinese responded not by working it out, but hacking into Solar World's files for which they were indicted by our Justice Department. And so I want to make sure that that, it's called the commenced construction provision, is going to be there so that Jim can make those investments in solar. I just want to make sure it is done in a fashion so we haven't given a boost to the Chinese in terms of trying to evade tariff restrictions for dumping on our industry. It's obviously important to Portland, but it's important generally, because the last thing we want to do is help the Chinese, apropos questions here again about trade, is help them take advantage of the trade laws to hurt our American industries and dump product.
That's all the numbers I have, is anybody have a question that haven't had an opportunity yet?
Way in the back.
Speaking of Chinese attacking, I'm kind of interested in what OPM will be doing to rectify what they've done with their lack of what they've done to protect their employees.
I'll, I'll have some more to say publicly on OPM here, you know, very quickly, because obviously this was a breakdown in the system. But we'll say one thing publicly on this. There are some who have said that the response is to pass this cybersecurity bill, that would have people sharing more information with the government.
Is that a good idea?
Yeah, and that's, well, I'll just tell you, in the Intelligence Committee, there was a vote on this particular proposal. The vote was 14 to 1. You can probably guess who the 1 was. Your guy on the Intelligence Committee. And the reality is that it can be useful to share information. Cybersecurity is clearly a problem, but sharing cybersecurity information, given what happened at OPM, without strong privacy protections, puts at risk our people, and is really not so much a cybersecurity bill as it is a surveillance bill. And I've been spending a lot of time fighting the NSA over the last, you know, few years to get them to get out of the business of drug and surveillance over all your phone records as law-abiding people, and get them to focus on the real threat, of which there are many, who are involved in terrorist activity. And there've been some pretty counterproductive proposals here recently. You may have heard that the FBI director, gentleman named James Comey, has proposed that companies be required to build weaknesses into their products, because he doesn't like their strong encryption. And encryption, of course, is what you do to kind of scramble the data and the messages. So let me unpack that one for you. The NSA and Mr. Comey overreached and went secretly to the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Court to get permission to collect millions and millions of phone records on law-abiding Americans. And I and others warned that when the public learns about this, they're going to be mad. Public learned about it. The public said to the companies, boy, it doesn't look to us like our personal information is safe. The companies responded, because they were getting hurt both in the United States and around the world, the companies responded by putting in strong encryption, because then people would have the sense that their data and their messages was secure. And Mr. Comey, rather than sitting down with advocates of privacy rights and companies and life, said, hey, our answer is let's not just require these companies to build weaknesses in their products, so we won't have any problem kind of getting in when we needed to. I pointed out, if you're having trouble sleeping at night, you can read the essay that I wrote, it's online, I pointed out that if the good guys get the keys, the government, you can be very sure that the bad guys are going to get the keys too. Kind of people who hacked into OPM. And I'm very troubled, because we had an open intelligence hearing, we have very few open intelligence hearings. And I listened to Mr. Comey, there was an earlier one, and I think where the government is going is the idea that somewhere, somehow, there'd be some kind of stockpile of keys to defeat. it's online, um, I pointed out that if the good guys get the keys, the government, you could be very sure that the bad guys are going to get the keys too. Kind of people who hacked into OPM. And I'm very troubled, because we had an open intelligence hearing, we have very few open intelligence hearings, and I listened to Mr. Comey, there was an earlier one, and I think where the government is going is the idea that somewhere, somehow, there'd be some kind of stockpile of keys to deceive encrypted products that people in Lakeview and everywhere else are going to use. And I'm not going to let it happen on my watch. So, there you are.
Senator Wyden, in regards to what you're speaking of, you, you spent a lot of years advocating for the privacy of, of the American public. There has been a change just recently in regards to that? Are you, are you good with that, or do you think there should have been a little further action taken?
I, I wish we'd gone further. I tried to bar the FBI from, um, requiring companies build weaknesses into their products. I also very much want to close the backdoor search loophole in the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Act. This is what we use when you have a foreigner who's a threat, we all want to make sure we're on top of it. But today, as phone companies and communication systems become globally integrated, a lot of law-abiding Americans are getting swept up in the search. And I think you ought to have to get a warrant before you look at the email of those law-abiding, you know, Americans. So we've still got more to do. But I think to end the day when the federal government runs what I call a human relations database, and that's what you have, if the government knows who you called, when you called, and where you called, you know, from, I think that was a good thing. So I voted for it. I think it's arguably been the best privacy step forward from last decade. Anybody not get a chance to ask a question? Anybody leaving, just kind of itching now at something else?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, my name's Judy Stewart. I live in A.D. And I understand that there's a, a bill that passed the House on delaying the sage grouse listing for ten years. And what is the status of that going before the Senate? And would you speak to the sage grouse issue a little?
I have been amazed that we would get this far in the program. Nobody asked about the sage grouse. I'm very hopeful, Ms. Geterow and Mr. Kenny are putting in a lot of time on this with the ranchers and the environmental people and people who are for the bird and all this kind of thing. I'm very hopeful that we're going to see a solution between the ranchers and the various parties, that, um, probably bad pun, will take flight and will allow us to keep this out of, you know, a governmental, um, you know, process, because I'm very much aware of the concern and what the ramifications are for, you know, ranchers and the like. So Mary and Wayne are staying on top of these negotiations. My sense is the Senate is going to give this a little bit more time to see if this effort with the ranchers and environmental folks can, uh, can work. And I'm doing everything I can to do it, and I think that we can help with resources and the like to make sure it happens. All right, everybody, um, I'll just tell you, I really appreciate everybody coming out on a Saturday night. I mean, this is what the founding fathers thought about a little, like, wasn't a bad question in the House? And, um, a lot of very thoughtful, you know, points. Look, I'll tell you, I do not have all the answers, not by any means, but it's a tremendous honor to represent you in the United States Senate. You know, I went to school on a basketball scholarship, dreaming of playing in the NBA, a ridiculous theory, because I was too small, and I made up for it by being really slow, so that wasn't going to happen, that I wasn't going to make it to the NBA. And I started working with the senior citizens and got a chance to, um, get into public service. And I can't imagine a greater honor than representing Oregon in the United States Senate right now. All the important things that we've got in front of us. I don't have all the answers, but what I will tell you, and I want to thank Ken as well for being here, is that I so appreciate, appreciate the dignity and the thoughtfulness and respectfulness that this community has for participating, you know, in government. You know, in much of the world, you can't have a meeting like this. Much of the world, somebody can't even run for office unless it's been pre-approved. In other words, if the ruling class hadn't, you know, approved it, you can't even run for office. So Lakeview, here in the last ninety minutes or whatever it's been, has really, in my view, been a textbook case of what the founding fathers wanted us to do. And on my watch, as long as I have the honor to represent you in the United States Senate, this is the way we'll do it in the day ahead. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you.
And I'll just add one thing. Just one character, Ruth, is about Ron that I really appreciate. He's very adamant about government transparency, and I appreciate that very much.
Yes.
Very much.